Good morning, everyone. It's 10 o'clock. Let's call the meeting to order for Commissioners Court, Polk County, for July 24th, 2018. If you have not already done so, if you would, please mute your cellphones and your pagers. And at this time, we would ask Pastor Jimmy Calvert from First United Methodist Church in Non-Alaskan Province to come lead us in prayer.
Almighty God, we recognize you as the giver and sustainer of all life. We thank you for the many ways that you have blessed us this day with life and liberty and the freedom to pursue our dreams. We humbly ask for your blessing and guidance in our proceedings today. Unite our minds and hearts as we seek to make the best decisions for your people. Grant us wisdom and humility to use resources rightly and to serve the public well. Bless our elected officials, protect our first responders, and watch over our fellow citizens that our community might reflect your desire on earth as it is in heaven. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Johnson?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number two, do we have anyone sign up for public comment? No, ma'am. Number three, informational reports. Do we have any elected officials that would like to give an informational report? Okay, item number four, consent agenda. You have an addendum on B, or several addendums on B. Addendum number one is in the amount of $61,196.97. Addendum number two is in the amount of $1,224. Addendum number three is in the amount of $18,807.16. Is there anything on the consent agenda that anyone would like to pull off for discussion? No? Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Vincent, Second Commissioner Overstreet, any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, consider approval of personnel matters as follows. You have review and consideration of personal action form requests that were submitted since the last meeting, and review of any authorized emergency hiring. We have one emergency hire at the Sheriff's Department.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Willis.
Second.
Second Commissioner Overstreet, any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, consider requests for revisions and/or amendments to the budget as follows. You have your FY 2018 budget revisions and amendments as presented by the county auditor's office, and a copy of those amendments were included in your packet.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Willis, Second Commissioner Vincent, any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, discuss and take any and all necessary action regarding the purchase of the Odyssey software for the court systems. We met several times with the JPs, the DA's office, the clerks, everyone that was involved, and they went to demonstrations also. I attended a demonstration along with my office. And basically, what it amounts to is that our net data is not being able to keep up with the services that are required by Shalana's office, by Bobby's office, by all the JPs. So, at this time, if we do approve to do this, to move on over to Odyssey, then at a later day, we would come back to issue the debt, and so we'd be back on the agenda at a later time. Shalana, you want to add anything to this?
I mean, it'll be a good deal for all of us, and get us integrated and up to speed and so forth.
So, we reserve.
Okay. Commissioner Purvis? Did I have a second? I have two over here?
No.
Commissioner Willis?
I have a question.
Okay, what's your question?
Y'all got any kind of initial cost on this, or testament?
Yes, sir. It is currently on our capital projections. We already put it on the capital projections, so there would be something that we could look at if we did decide to move forward with it. Because it is going to have a cost, obviously an initial cost, but then our long-term costs or yearly expenditures will not be as high.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Commissioner Willis. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, consider and approve precinct one purchase of one-use compactor with trade-in of one-use compactor from Hendrick's Equipment in an amount not to exceed $32,000. I'm assuming that comes as a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Willis, Second Commissioner Overstreet, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, receive compensation study for Management Advisory Group International and consider any necessary action regarding this study. We received it on Friday, the final report, and all of you should have one in front of you. So, I'm going to just kind of review some of this information for the group and for the record. Okay, we received it Friday afternoon, so everybody has a printout, the court does. What we asked for was that this be based on a market analysis, which would be an unbiased third party evaluating it. So, the draft report will require some changes because we've had staff changes that occurred in the interim. Basically, what it recommends is at least a 2.5 increase across the board, then adjusting that to the minimum if that individual was still below and placed on the next step up. It was updated to reflect only the county employees, not the district court, because the district judges decide that, so we will give them that, the information. We gave them all of our current salary study, all of our current job descriptions, along with elected official salaries, everything, so that they could compare it. We did have one request that was made, not during the court, but at another date. We had one request that was made to add a position, but that was beyond the scope of what the court requested. But if the court wishes to come back and reconsider and add positions or add job descriptions, then that's certainly something that can be considered. But what the court asked them to do was to include a review of all salaries, current salaries, and recommendations for those rates. So, there were several salaries that were not returned by other agencies, so they are not included in this, or they were incomplete. They only provided job descriptions for one area or one group. Okay, so, I guess let's dive into it. I'm assuming all of you have taken a look at it. The first section basically gives you the basic information about how they proceeded. It tells you which counties were surveyed. It tells you which cities, public agencies, and private companies. So, it included a little bit of everything. It gives you the 27 benchmark jobs, which were the ones that kind of matched, and then they went from there. So, if you go on to, if you turn to the page that shows you the survey information, it has the graphs, the first one with graphs. Okay, what that does is it basically goes through, the other thing that we asked them to do is we asked them to review our benefits packages as compared to other areas or other counties or other entities, those same entities. So, if you go through that, the benefits survey for Polk County says that employee benefits make up the percentage of employees' compensation. We are above the market. Cafeteria plan, they are saying no change. Waive certain insurances in order to receive contributions, we're consistent with the market. Part-time employees, we're consistent with the market. Tuition, educational assistance, no change was needed. We're equally divided in terms of providing education incentive pay, and we will evaluate that. We'll certainly ask, because that's pretty much equally split. Then if you turn to the next page, days of leave, we are ahead of the market, and they recommend that we evaluate that. Days of leave earned but not used, that can be carried over. We're above the market, and they recommend that we evaluate that. Bereavement leave, no change was suggested. They do say reimbursement upon termination. There's no reason to make an adjustment at this time, but we need to keep an eye on that. They do say that we need to evaluate people that are on standby or on-call status. And then, our next one, stay by the phone or carry a pager, consistent with the general market. Providing take-home vehicles for employees, we're consistent with the market. And then, they did ask about department heads having an vehicle allowance, and so we will evaluate that to see who is impacted. Exempt employees under FLSA paid overtime, no change was suggested. We're consistent with the majority of the market. Exempt under FLSA for comp time for overtime hours, they're recommending that we evaluate that and monitor it. Self-insured versus joining a group, that's a split. Our health plan, we're consistent in offering a PPO. The benefits survey for Polk County, the maximum dollar amount and percentage of premium paid by the employer to employees and/or dependents for insurances, basically, it's saying that we are way above the market. Basically, Polk County offers twice what the market average was. Employee retirement plan, their description was extremely competitive and highly competitive on all retiree benefits. We are way above the market. And so then, that gets us to Section 5, which is the proposed pay structure and plan. And that's basically where Page 1 starts. Okay, they give you the basic pay grades. That's on Page 2 and Page 3. Those are the proposed pay grades with 16 steps. And then, they give you what they call the unified, and those are, then they go to pay plans. Go to proposed pay plans. Then, it starts going through and telling you what the minimum, the market, the maximum, the hourly, everything that they offer for every job that we currently have. And then, if you skip a couple of pages, go to the class comparison list, and this is consolidated by pay grade. And it goes through, and again, it tells you exactly where each group would be paid. Part of what they did was they took different jobs and put them in groups based on responsibility, based on their work, based on all different things. Okay, so then you have all these different pay grades, and that's five pages on the pay grades. And then, if you go past the pay grades, then you'll get the proposed class list by title. And to me, that tells me more, because what it does is it goes through by title and tells you what grade they fall under, what their code is, and then the minimum and the maximum range for that position and for that job. And then, towards the very end, you pass where they go through and make recommendation about these jobs, where our employees need to be placed on those jobs. So, that's the implementation cost with detail. Then the last, at the very end, you're going to see the summary. So, the summary for Polk County is that our current payroll is $7,944,000 and $44,537. That's 245 positions. So, a flat 2.5 adjustment is at a cost of $197,390. The adjustment to minimum will cost $127,208. The adjustment to step will be $31,432. And then, the stipends and supplements does not affect the payroll. It does affect the payroll, but some of those are like the DA's office has supplements that they handle, and some of these are different supplements that are available in other areas. So, the total applied adjustments is $356,030. Now, keep in mind that that is not including benefits. So, by the time we add benefits to that, then we're going to go way, way higher. It'll be closer to $500,000. So, the proposed new payroll would be $8,367,000, which is a change in payroll of 4.48 percent, four and a half percent. The 245, if you go through that summary, the 245 positions, 244 were adjusted. 119 were adjusted to minimum. 241 were adjusted to step, and then 60 were assignment, which just means that they simply changed the title to where it fell more within the market. We only had one position that was not recommended for any change. Any questions on that?
No question, just a comment.
Are we going to need action on this today, or?
Oh, no, sir. We can table, but this part does impact the budget. So, we can table it. We certainly can.
That's not included in our preliminary here in any way.
The transition is included in the preliminary.
Yeah.
Yeah, we included many, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Now, we-
We could table, give us a little more time?
Oh, absolutely. No, absolutely. If what you wanted more time to go over, then there's certainly not a problem with that at all.
Do any of the other elected officials have a copy of this?
No, sir.
But why don't we give them a copy, let them look at it? I'd like to have some input from them.
That is not a problem whatsoever.
Since this does absolutely nothing for law enforcement, which was the main reason, I think we started this program because we're losing so many of our employees to other counties and so forth. I'd sure like to hear from the Sheriff's Department.
Well, if you go to the Sheriff's Department list-
Well, I'd talk to them after they look at this. They haven't even seen it.
Well, I can summarize it for you. The change for the Sheriff's Department is, for the sheriff, for total, for the Sheriff's Department is not quite $80,000. For the jail, it's right at $78,000, and for security, it's around $3,000. And what we asked was not just for the Sheriff's Department to be evaluated, but for all employees. And actually, the changes that occurred at the Sheriff's Department, interestingly enough, were mostly for the telecommunications operators. That's where the main impact was, at the Sheriff's Department.
We're talking salaries?
Yes, sir.
The 2.5 percent is what we're talking?
No, sir. The total across the board was 4.48.
So, we're just looking at, we're just looking at for telecommunications when deputies would only be looking at 2.5?
No, sir. It varies depending on the person. It varies depending on the person. So, if we go through this, like in your case, in your case, the increase was 8.26. Now, the next person's may be 3.15, 3.20, 3.13, 3.18, 3.3.
And that's kind of like what Commissioner was saying. What would be great would be transparency in this, is that if the elected official, they would have an opportunity to be able to look at this.
Oh, absolutely. That's not a problem whatsoever.
We would actually have some numbers to be able to see where, if we were getting a fair shake in this, other than just seeing some numbers.
Okay, here's the thing. We asked for a third party to evaluate this and look at it, right? We asked them to look at every employee, not just at the Sheriff's Department, or not just at the DA's office, right, but to look at everybody. And I understand, I understand that we're losing some of our law enforcement. And so, I did get some information. So, stop and think about this. In Polk County, our certified values, okay, our certified values right now are about $3.5 billion. We are losing people to Montgomery County. Their certified values are $54 trillion. We're never going to be able to compete with Montgomery County. And we're not just losing law enforcement to Montgomery County, we're losing all kinds of people to Montgomery County.
We're not just losing Montgomery County, we're losing Harris County, we're losing to Baytown, we're losing to other counties also.
Harris County.
So, we're not trying to just keep up with them. We just want to be in a fair market.
And that's what we're doing. And that's what we're trying to do.
The guys are not just wanting to, we're not wanting to live extravagant. We just want to live.
Okay, but so do all our other employees also.
And so, and I'm not just speaking for just Sheriff's Department, I'm speaking for everybody. But we're the ones that's just losing the most folks.
And I understand that.
May I give this to Mr. Lance?
Huh?
May I hand this to Mr. Lance?
Sure.
Salary is based off of counties of our society.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. The counties that were surveyed, the counties that were surveyed are right over here. You have Angelina County, Austin County, Bastrop, Grimes, Harden, Jasper, Jefferson, Liberty, Nacogdoches, and Walker. We asked Montgomery County to provide us information. They did not provide us across-the-board information. Most of what they provided us was law enforcement information. Well, if we use Montgomery County to raise law enforcement salaries only, well, then we're skewing our results. What we need to be able to evaluate is every job in every position, right? And so, the only way to do that is to have somebody unbiased that is just looking at the numbers, looking at the jobs, looking at what that person does, and giving a job description.
Can I say something more, please?
Yes, ma'am.
I just have one comment. But what you have to understand is all the rest of these people and myself, I don't get shot at for doing my job.
And that's taking into, all of those taking into consideration.
And we've got a guy that got shot at for $73 a day. He almost got killed. And that's something that everybody here that makes those decisions. And I understand it's an emotional decision on my part. But you've got to look at that. These men are getting shot at, and it's more dangerous every day for so little, and there's people that are saying, hold on. There's people that are secretaries and stuff making almost as much money as those people getting shot at. And that's something y'all need to keep in your mind. I'm not going to say that y'all need to change anything. I understand that y'all did the survey, and this is what it came back. But you understand those people are getting shot at for doing their job and putting their life on the line for people that people like us are not.
And that's what it takes into consideration. That's the whole idea. The whole idea is to compare everything. The whole idea is to compare job to job, right, across the board. That's the whole idea.
But you can't have secretaries sitting in the office making more than a man getting shot at. And that's just my opinion. That's all I'm going to say about it.
Well, one of the areas that we were weak in, according to this survey, was actually with JP Court clerks. You know, so, I don't know what, I don't know what a JP Court clerk is in another county. That's why we hired someone else to look at it and to tell us.
Can I understand where you're coming from? That's just my opinion, and I think it needed to be stated. That's all I'm going to say.
Well, and that's why we're doing this, is so that everybody can look at it. Because there's not a single person in here that's not going to say, my people are worth more money. We all think that our employees are worth more money. And what they did with this also is they took into consideration placement. They took, when they placed these employees on here, they took into consideration how many years they had worked for the county, and whether or not they'd received merit raises, and so they adjusted all of that accordingly.
And I don't feel that was correct, because there's people in here, 18 years, they put them at a step two.
Because they were below the minimum. Because they were below the minimum, and they had to take them up.
18 years is a step two.
Marsha Cook, 33 years. 18 years at step two, who's that?
I'm 20 years at step two.
On this?
Yeah. Well, I don't know about that.
I was going to say, how did you get it?
Where I'm currently at.
Yes, sir. And Marsha Cook is 33 years at step four. You know, so that's part of what we're trying to correct, is to get, is it going to shoot everyone up to the top? No, because we just moved the whole pay scale up. The pay scale has just been moved up. See, so that they're going to place them where they believe they need to be. The recommendation for you is an increase of 3.15.
I can understand.
You would go from 46,584 to 48,052. You want to make that a motion to table for next time?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to make a motion to table.
Very well. Motion to table, Commissioner Purvis?
I'd like to make a comment. Now, but in my understanding, you know, if you're, say, 20 years at a step two, that's not anything we can, I don't want to throw the sheriff on the bus. He's not here, but that's between you and him, is how you move on steps. It's not, we don't get steps.
Yes, sir, you do. Yes, sir, you do. You get a better opportunity than our office does. Yes, sir, you do. Whenever you have merit monies available, what the sheriff has chosen to do is he's chosen to promote or add positions, and that's what he did with the money. If y'all will recall, in November, we actually gave him additional monies because he didn't have enough merit money to create those two promotions, and that's in the budget document.
Create two promotions.
And that may have been in the jail. Was it in the jail? Okay, in the jail, when Brent left, then what he did was he took and created two spots, and the court actually gave him additional monies for those two spots. And so, the merit monies, and certainly the merit monies need to be evaluated, and the court can do that. But the merit monies are available, especially in the large departments, you know, compared to the smaller departments.
Did you say we gave him additional money, or we allowed him to use the excess money that he had when one left at a higher salary?
We used that, and we gave him one. Yes, sir.
When the jail went to 12-hour shifts, there was two positions created to accommodate for those supervisors.
That is correct. And so, he received additional monies from the court, and those are currently budgeted. Okay, out of motion, Purvis, the Second Commissioner Vincent to table for next time. Any further discussion or questions?
We just need to make sure that the elected officials get-
Oh, yes, sir. No, no, no. We will send it out this afternoon. We will send it out this afternoon. Anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number 11. Discussion and any necessary action regarding the FY 2019 employee benefits. A, the annually determined contribution rate for the Texas County and District Retirement System. At this time, they are determining that we should remain, and since the retired COLAs are paid over periods of time, and right now, we are paying for two previous increases, and TCDRS recommends against adding any additional COLA to our retirees at this point. So, we can, you have a TC DRS renewal in there, in your packet, which is your summary. And so, their recommendation is that we not make any additions, and we just stay as we are. Can I have a motion?
Show them.
Commissioner Willis, Second Commissioner Vincent, any further discussion or questions? All in favor- All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. B, employee health coverage and major medical. Cecil Langston is here. But it appears at this time that there's no clear advantages or cost savings. But we will let Cecil.
Thank you, Judge. Good morning to you guys. Thanks for having us again. If it pleases the Court, I wanted to recognize a couple of people that are in the room. I hate doing that. I don't want to forget anybody. But Carrie and Judge Murphy, Ms. Gilbert, Lori Ford, and Tac. They have all helped us put together a package and review the health insurance. If y'all remember, about five or six weeks ago, you asked us via a broker selection process to review your existing medical insurance. We've done that. A couple of points that I wanted to remind y'all. One of the reasons we were asked to do this is we currently manage and look after San Houston Electric's plan, NOSCO's plan. We look after First National Bank, Thomas Supply, people that y'all know and do business with every day. So, these are folks that we run the same plans that we, that are similar here at the county. There are five major carriers that got, that made it through the Obama piece. Cigna, Humana, United Healthcare, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and one more, Aetna. So, we went out to those five people. The incumbent is obviously Blue Cross Blue Shield through the Texas Association of Counties. Those other four folks of those, two of those declined to bid due to claims experience. There are, there are some claims at the county level. You can't have 278 people employed and not have some claims. That's not news to y'all, okay? The other two were not able to, they were not able to have a better rate than what the Texas Association of Counties had through Blue Cross Blue Shield. So, again, I wanted to share with y'all. The working relationship that y'all have with Tac is very good. They stepped up to the plate, helped us take a look at this. Your benefit package is top shelf. Those people that I shared a while ago that we take care of have similar packages as what you have now. So, again, we, I wanted to remind the Court, we are not charging anything for this service. We're appreciative to do it, glad to be included in that. And questions, comments?
So, well, so at this time, basically, we're declining all of those.
Yes, thank you.
And we will go back to Tac, which was one of Commissioner Purvis's questions, and decide which plan or how we wish to proceed.
Absolutely. And we'd be available for assistance with that at the Court's discretion.
Very well.
Questions, comments? Oh, you're more than welcome. Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks, Cecil.
You bet. Appreciate it.
You know what? Let's put that in a form of a motion that we will reject all offers.
So, move.
Commissioner Purvis, Commissioner Vincent. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then Cecil will come back at a later date with ancillary products because they have no budget impact. We were just trying to make sure we did the budget impact. Okay, item number 12, preliminary budget discussion. Okay. This is a, everybody should have a draft that budget that we have for you. If you go to page one, that kind of gives you the budget highlights like we have in the past, where we've given you the information. And then each, each one is color-coded. So, on the budget highlights, if you look at the first one, that's revenues. And you can go through it and see what the change is. You'll notice we have less transfer between funds. But that's just more of an adjustment and reflecting revenues that sometimes get reflected twice. Okay. And then if you go to page two, that's your expenses. Now, keep in mind, on budgets, anything that's in the red has a negative impact on the budget. On expenses, what's in red has a positive impact, right? Because it's, it's a decrease in the expenses. So, if you go through and you look at that, then you see the expenses are 2019 preliminary at $30,886,196,01. And then it gives you an explanation, okay, on the side. It gives you an explanation on any of the changes or any, any updates that have, that have occurred. It also tells you whether or not there was a budget impact. There's some, like the Permanent School Trust Fund, that any change in that budget has no budget impact for us. We're responsible for monitoring it, but it doesn't have a budget impact for us. Okay, if you go to page three. These are the certified next taxable values that Chad Hill has given us. And our net value for budgeting is $2,897,263,254. And so, the increase that we've had in net taxable value for budgeting is a 1.73% increase. So, that's a pretty flat, pretty flat line for us. So, then it goes through the same thing. It gives you the changes, the proposed at the lower. Now, this is, this is assuming that there's not going to be any, any change in our, in our tax rate. All right? So, right now, there's, this is holding the same tax rate. So, then it goes through and gives you the revenues, all the different revenues. And then at the bottom, the tax rate distribution for budget. You have your debt service fund at 15.52%. General fund at 61.71. Road and Bridge Fund at 22.77. Any questions on that page? And we're not going to make any decisions today at all. This is just for us to kind of go through and start looking at budgets. Okay, if you go to page four. Then this is the precinct road and bridge funding. And then you have your formulas, 23%, 23%, 27%, 27%. And the breakdown. And so, the targeted budget balance is at the very bottom, which include, which reflects an increase of $29,511 from the prior year to be split. And then page five is your capital purchase projection, which are tax notes, issuance of debt. These are all the things that people have asked for in their budget discussion. So, some of these obviously are going to get reviewed or discussed at a later date by the Court. And then above it, you have your prior tax note issues that were not yet retired. And so, if you look at them, in 2012, we had, we had a million, around a million. 2013, 525,000. 2014, about a million six. 2015, around a million. 2016 was, was when we were trying to bring things down at $145,000 worth of debt issued. And then 2017, we issued no debt and paid with the IH funds. And then we just finished doing our reimbursement resolution for 2018. And that is actually on the last page. And that, that was in the amount of $962,047. Okay, page six is the debt schedule. We still have some, some major debt that will drop off. If you look, you have the tax notes along with the general obligation bonds that we have issued and our contractual obligation, which is the Way Company. The judicial center of that debt will drop off in 2023. And then the jail drops off in 2027. And then the rest of them are basically serious tax notes that we've issued for equipment and material as we went along. And then you have the estimate for the 2018 tax notes. And that's just an estimate at this time because we just, we just closed, closed it out.
Not going down much, but it's going down over each year?
Yes, sir.
Till the next 2020, 2021? 2022 is when we'll start seeing some.
Yes, sir. 2021 and 2022, you're going to see, see some draw. And then 2023 is when, but the impact when that drops off is not, is not huge. You know, because by then, we've trickled down and paid all.
2024.
Yes, sir. Okay, if you flip the page to the next page, then that is the road and bridge portion of the debt. And each of you all can review, can review those. Okay, and then page eight is when you start getting into the full budget document. We've done the same thing that we've done in the past. You have 2018 adopted and amended, and then the 2019. And then some of those, you know, different items are highlighted so that, so that you can see. We have, we've had some increases in certain areas. And we've had some decreases in revenue also in other areas. And those are all highlighted for everybody to review. You will note on page 13, you have salary survey transition cost. And we put $550,000 in there for now. And we're going to be pretty close to using all of it. Okay, it does the same thing that it did before. It just goes through each, each department. This time, the district. And of course, a lot of this is going to get changed. Keep in mind that when we implement the salary schedule in whichever manner we implement it, then when we implement that salary schedule, well, then it's going to have an impact on this budget. Because the new salary schedule is not in there. But the transition cost that we put in there will come out and slide over to the salary schedule side. It just won't be in there as a single-line item.
But it's appropriated?
Yes, sir.
Just gets broken down into the individual?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
It's, it's 550 is figured into this budget?
Yes, sir.
To balance this budget?
Yes, sir. 550 is figured in. And then we will discuss with the district judges how they wish to proceed. The only other request that we did have that is not in this budget because we received it late, and we would have, need to speak to all the fire chiefs, is that we did receive a request for additional funding for some of the smaller volunteer fire departments. And if we decide to proceed that direction, we're, right now, we're gathering information just to see what other counties do, how we compare. And so, we will bring that information to the Court. And we will discuss it with the fire chiefs so that they can decide. They're the ones that came up with the formula that we utilize right now. Then if you go, if you go to page 77 and 78, it kind of gives you the summary And then if you go to the very last page, we put on there the 2018 reimbursement resolution. Any questions?
Not yet.
Not yet? That's fine.
I'm supposed to adjourn.
I sent it to the drawing, Commissioner Overstreet, and second Commissioner Purvis.
10:47.
What time?
10:47. Thank you, ma'am.